Okay, Tuesday night planning board meeting, January ninth, 2024 at seven oh two PM. Motion to open.
So motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, why don't we wait for one of the planning board members so we're gonna start a little bit out of schedule. Approval of minutes, September fifth, 2023, October sixteenth, 2023, December nineteenth, 2023, meeting minutes for approval. Everybody have a chance to give a look.
Excellent work.
Excellent work. Motion to adopt the meeting minutes?
I will vote to approve meeting minutes from the December nineteenth, September fifth, and October sixteenth meetings.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tom Plinter up to you, Annie, what do we got?
All right, everything, our projects are pretty status quo. On the horizon, the new owner of one Elton Park, which was also known as the old Starland Park building, will most likely be applying for a site cam review and parking special permit in the near future. Once Wally gets here, I would like to schedule meetings for the next couple months, just so we have that all set, because I know he'll need to do the newspaper notices and things like that, so it'll be easier for me if I can tell them a certain date and time without having to run any of you guys a million times to make sure you're all available, all have a plan, et cetera, et cetera, so, yeah, just wait till you guys schedule it until Wally gets here.
Okay, anything else?
No, um, for the sake of killing some time, until Wally gets here. You guys hear that, right?
Yeah.
Is that us humming?
Uh huh. It's, it's that. Okay. Unfortunately.
Okay, just checking, yeah, I know it was one of our lines.
Yeah, the mic is like picking up or something. I have very loud.
Oh.
What's that, we have technical difficulties?
Okay, um, oh, loud. Oh, for the sake of killing time, King Street, or 106 King Street, or Katy Lane, as it's known now, is going well. The first house on that street received its occupancy permit. So yes, that's going well. Eight thirty-three Salem Street is going well. The storage units, there are at least two buildings up. I'm trying to kill time, but that's kind of all I got.
We have an update from the body station.
Yes. Yes, and we have another one, which I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want me to just...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So at the last meeting, I had mentioned that I was still waiting on the applicant's engineer to respond to TEC's comments. I have since received a response from the applicant's engineers, and so TEC is taking a look at those. So I think I got, TEC should probably have them next week, I think. I forgot Bill was here with TECs. Hi, Bill. So yeah, probably about another week on those, but we'll see. It's, I mean, with the ground frozen right now, I doubt we'd see any site movement on that for at least a couple months.
Should we do the zoning bylaw? You wanna wait for Wally to give me the dates?
I can touch on what we're looking to do, if you want, or we can wait, except, sure, okay. So from, so Sam, the building commissioner, and I, every year kind of touch base on what we've seen throughout the year as far as zoning changes, and this year there wasn't much. But the, one thing that's kind of been an up and coming kind of topic, I guess, is battery storage systems, those really large scale battery storage units. Think like storage container size in zoning for those. Right now, our zoning, it's not mentioned in our zoning, and therefore it's prohibited. It's tend, it's looking like it's heading in the direction of solar panels, where it's something that you can't prohibit, but you can have a bylaw for to, you know, limit in certain ways, but it can't be prohibited. So it's, we're kind of getting ahead of it, hopefully, to try to put together a bylaw so that if someone does come in, they are able to, you know, given certain circumstances, build the battery storage unit, our light department obviously being one of those entities.
So would that be the only person that would want some capability of a container-sized battery storage?
I'm gonna be honest, I don't understand much about battery storage systems at all. It's a topic that kind of goes over my head, but I will say for this, I've already, Sam, for when we do do the hearing on the bylaw, Kevin Snow will be here, he's the general manager of the light department, because he's very knowledgeable on the topic. Sam will be here, of course, as the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer to talk about it. So Kevin would be able to answer more of those questions, so once we get into the hearing, he'll be here.
Because if it's a municipality, so we have to open the door for everybody in the town to be able to have a battery storage capability, the size of a fifty-three foot container?
So...
What we should be able to do is the only capacity available outside, because we're shifting them into hazardous situations anyways. So we should be able to say up to X, I don't know what the measure is, up to X...
Megawatts, I learned.
Right, right, passing...
Yeah. Yeah, so the bylaw touches on that. The fire chief will also be here during the conversation. Yeah.
So the bylaws are the average in the region for the industrial side, or do we have nothing on either residential?
We're nothing.
We have nothing at the moment, so we have a rough draft version of that bylaw together, myself, Sam, Kevin Snow, and the fire chief are meeting later this, on Thursday, to put together a final draft for, to actually, you know, propose the zoning changes, something, a document for you guys to look at as a final draft, that would go into specifics, you know, and it's a pretty extensive bylaw in the sense that, you know, it calls out screening, it calls out fencing, it calls out what type of gates you might need, gets into all the specifics about what you would need as far as like fire protection stuff. Yeah, so it gets into all of, all of that.
Are you using other communities?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have, the bylaw that we're using is kind of the meat for our bylaw, I think, is Medway's bylaw. But... Sorry? I know, but, so we'll, we'll, you'll have info for the next meeting on it, but it is something, because it needs to be on the town meeting warrant, we need to schedule a hearing date for it, so I can notice it in the newspaper, ABC, XYZ, the whole hoopla.
Yeah, like Annie was saying, it's gonna be coming down from the state, we won't have a choice.
Yeah, they'll, they'll make it.
That's what I'm thinking. We don't know for sure if that's what's gonna happen, but given trends, you know?
The whole point of doing something like that in the town is, is to manage the peak cost of electricity. During peak times, we're getting charged for electricity we bring in that's up here. And if we're using it off a battery during those times, we can bring those costs down, the savings for the entire community.
There's a lot more to go along with just the cost involved, and the safety factor. All containers goes up.
Well, that's why you have to make sure all the safety's there, but...
So, I mean, I, I'm not saying kick it down the road and say it's not, like this...
Yeah. Well, the, the other thing is, we're, if we do choose to kind of kick it down the road, as you say, if the state mandates that you have to put it in, and we don't have a bylaw in place, then it could go anywhere in town. So with, however they want, it could be the state's lax rule, so if we have a bylaw already in place, we're protected in that sense, so no matter what, we're getting what we want with already having this bylaw in place.
Do we know that the state's gonna mandate this, like, next week, or...
No, but I mean, if you look at the way solar panels have happened, you can't prohibit solar panels.
No, but they, I, I don't think this is gonna be a debate, like, I wouldn't guess that number.
Yeah, but that's, but that's an assumption. We had someone in the audience that signed it, and yes.
I have a hearing tomorrow night on this, right?
With the state?
In Framingham, for state level facility.
Oh, really?
They're impending, there's more to it, obviously, I don't know. I haven't talked to anyone off the line about it, and I can share what I know about it.
But you think the state's getting it?
It's coming back to fruition. Again, you cite the solar, and that's exactly it. It essentially acts as a solar battery system without the solar component, and as was mentioned, it's meant to mitigate peaks and valleys in the power. And typically, the storage units are like twenty by eight, nine foot high. They have batteries within containers, within cabinets, so there's about six layers of protection inside each of these battery units, and they're meant to, you know, they're meant to essentially gather that electricity in non-peak hours, and then during peak hours, set it up. Eventually, the notion is that that would work off of any source charging, which could be solar, which could be, you know, whatever, alternative energies, that type of thing, but it's essentially going in that direction. I don't know about the timeline for the state mandating, but certainly it's something that, you know, according to people I'm working with, and I, like I said, I know for here tomorrow, ZBA, Framingham, it's a simple thing, but it's interesting.
Well, but it's the whole state, and it doesn't matter if it's Framingham or Grohlwood.
It's coming down, and eventually, we wanna get ahead of it, we don't wanna be behind it.
No, I understand that, but you also want, one little container is gonna power the town in a peak hour, is that what you're saying? I know nothing about this.
No, this could be personal use and storage, I mean, it could be, you know...
Yeah, I think ultimately, you know, I think the legislation is meant to, to sort of get your arms around the larger battery storage components. There's already, well, many people who install solar also install battery packs, you've heard of the Tesla packs, they install the Tesla...
Tesla battery packs are in the basements.
Right, simple, they got one or two of them, and they power, this is meant for a larger, you know, municipal type of power, charging the, charging the grid, and then backcharging it, as I mentioned, so, you know, there's a lot of questions, and when we go into towns and cities, for instance, we start with the fire department, just to understand, and, you know, there's a lot of initiatives now, fire departments are getting ahead of this for the same type of thing, just like you, we would with the legislation, to understand what are the actual safety factors, safety risks, because, you know, if someone sees a Tesla, Tesla on fire on the side of the road, you understand that these could burn like that, but there's a lot of safety measures in place prior to that, including detections in every one of those chambers I mentioned, so there's a lot, there's a lot to it, but it's an interesting thing, because it's coming down sort of as a green initiative, you know?
I would, how many, after doing it, did you...
We can tackle them in the...
Once we have language in front of us, so, you know, redline and everything, I think the discussion will be easier, because we, the...
Well, I like the fact that he knows, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, just from my experiences, just the few that I'm working on now, you know?
Thank you. So I probably want, you know, the same know all about these things, but Kevin does, right?
Kevin will be here, the fire chief will be here, and Sam will be here, and maybe one of, another one of Kevin's...
The batteries?
No, because they're not proposing it, we are. We would have to try to find someone who installs batteries and probably pay them to come here. So I, I would assume Kevin knows enough about them that he would be able to answer them.
What do we...
We need to schedule it. Yeah, I'll have a, a hard final draft by Monday afternoon, so it's really just more so about, I need two weeks of noticing, so I need to get it, be able to get it in the newspaper twice prior to the hearing, so once we know timeline, we'll know that isn't...
Next up. Yeah, we're gonna be working on that, he's gonna want us to special point at the Apple Facility, because I, personally, I, five members are here.
Six members, well...
Yeah, but really five can vote. So why don't we do, why don't I recuse myself, but we can do the eight thirty-three Salem and fifteen Nelson Street, so these are some voters to go along with it, and the audience at this time, not the chairman, Chris? You wanna take over, or DJ, or someone else?
We can motion nominate Chris as the temporary chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, next up, eight thirty-three Salem Street, bond reduction request. So we, so maybe last time we discussed in front of the board, we were ready, you've seen that foundation we're in, and we're not going to be able to take the reduction?
Yep.
Right now, we got the... In front of you guys.
Might have to get the microphone into yourself, sir.
Brad Legals, eight thirty-three Salem Street, how are you guys tonight? So that was back about, what, about a month plus ago, maybe two months ago, so when we requested the bond reduction, now there are two buildings complete, the third building, the foundation is in, and it's eighty percent complete, it should be a hundred percent complete by next week. Electrical's going in, I believe, starting at the end of the week. We're looking for a temporary CO, probably by February thirteenth. The only thing that we're gonna be missing is paving. The fence is up, we left a portion of the fence out because we're talking to the woman up front while purchasing her property and taking that down and adding that up to the facility. So, I don't know if you want to sit there, Wally? So, the other, the other side of the coin was Nelson Street, we're gonna have to do an overlay after we put the hydrant in, but we brought the hydrant in at a different point of entry, coming down, crossing eight thirty-three Salem Street through the facility, and outside of the gate on Nelson Street, so we don't have to touch Nelson Street, disturb it. It's gonna be an access road for, I believe, the forty B up above, so we're gonna leave that as is, because there's probably gonna be some work that needs to be done in the future, I don't know when that's gonna happen. So I'd probably be looking for at least fifty percent bond reduction, you know, a hundred percent on Nelson Street, and fifty percent on eight thirty-three Salem Street, since a couple months has gone by, and we're almost done.
Thank you. Questions on the board? Is TEC's reported?
It is. They hadn't, they haven't gone back out in a bit to, for the bond reduction, but it is, it's, it's in there. It's closer to the end, there was, like, closer to the very, very end.
There's also a picture in there that shows, I know TEC talks about a couple piles of loom that's been there since we stripped it. If you notice, behind the loom piles, there's a steel fence that was originally installed. They call it unstable, it may be unstable, but it hasn't moved with all the rains and all the, you know, torrential downpours that we've had since we started in June. And the site is in gravel, and have been compacted gravel. I know, I don't know what the Massachusetts standards are, but New Hampshire AOT, if it's a compacted gravel, if, and this is vibratory rolled, then it's considered stable.
They recommend, recommend deduction as twelve thousand?
That was, that was a long time ago, though, that was... Annie, when was that original twelve thousand dollar bond reduction? It was like two months ago.
The date on that is November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I believe at that time, we had two monolithic slabs in.
You didn't even have the slabs in?
No. Well, look, look how far we are now.
That is, I can't tell from this... Tight, let me take a look, December... That's the most recent one. I included the most recent field report for this project.
What is the last argument on the bond reduction?
November twenty-seventh. Yep.
Yeah, so that's the twelve, that's called, no, it's back to eighteen. How much should we hold them now?
Fifty grand on one and thirty on the other?
Correct.
Nelson Street's complete, there's nothing to do on that.
So Nelson is the thirty?
Correct.
Nelson's the thirty, that should be full total...
So you're asking for a total of thirty, so twenty-five reduced?
Twenty-five reduced on eight thirty-three, and the total thirty reduced on Nelson.
So it's total twenty-five thousand?
Correct.
And the remaining work out there is...
It's gonna be just final grade in paid for this phase.
How much is paid?
Between the buildings?
And around the building?
And around the main access?
The main access, but that's, again, that should be stable, because it's rolled, it's about, it's about two and a half, three feet of gravel.
So you're looking both thirty or...
My Nelson Street, right.
You don't need to do one half?
Twenty-five on... Keep twenty-five on that.
I'll second that.
Now probably just need something to write in from the town, so I can...
There's already a draft in the packet.
I would like to come back to my seat.
I have a reading question. All right, next up.
Continue hearing on nine twelve Salem Street, according to the general law, chapter forty-eight, as amended, rolling zoning bylaw, section thirteen, a rolling zoning bylaw in relation. The boy will have the application made by Monty, for the nineteen fourteen, the nine twelve Salem Street, map forty-one, plot zero nine five, and the industrial one, residential one, R one, and residential two, R two, zoning districts, owned by William T. Bryan the Third, for site plan approval and stormwater management, land disturbance permit. The application is for construction of the contract as you add, and associated site work for the project. You're up.
Thank you very much. Hi, for the record, Steve Glowacki with Adji O'Connell and Associates?
Oh, sorry.
Motion to open the meeting.
So motion. Sorry, Tucker.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're up.
Hi, for the record, Steve Glowacki with Adji O'Connell Associates, with the civil engineers on the project, joining by Zoom today, Bill Bryan, the owner of the property, representing here, Mark A. Bear today. When I was last before you, several weeks ago, I think just prior to the holidays, we had some discussions about elements of the site, and I think specifically, we talked about truck turning and things like that, and at the time, we presented plans. We also discussed at the time, the outstanding peer review comments, and since that point in time, we had submitted something in response to those comments, and we had the benefit of working with TEC, it had several additional comments since that point in time, I think two, basically two outstanding comments, which we responded to in short order today, and I'm sure nobody's had a chance to even look at it, I think I sent it over at two o'clock or so, two thirty. But essentially, the two comments were, one was related to the interface between the proposed retaining wall and the sanitary system, and what we did was, we actually tweaked the grades a bit to move the wall further away, so that there's, it's essentially twelve feet away from the system, so there's no influence for one system on the other. In addition, we'll be providing final stamp plans when all is said and done, which essentially attests to the fact that we've, you know, we feel it meets design standards and things of the like. The other comment was related to trees and their interface with stormlines. The TEC notably picked up that some of the drain lines are rather close to some of the trees. As we will provide a final set of plans, including landscape, stamped landscape plans, we will include those trees being shifted slightly to make sure they're well outside that sphere of influence on the pipes, if you will. TEC recommended ten feet, and we agree, and certainly will address that on the final plans. The other item that was brought up at the hearing last time was a pylon sign, and before you, we, we set some plans out on the table, showing the location for a proposed monument sign to be positioned at the front edge of the site. It will be, you know, granted, it's a placeholder, but it will be designed, obviously, to meet the signage bylaw, and I know that has to be approved by the building inspector or the building department, so that will certainly be done at the time, and those details will have to be worked out in terms of the actual size of the sign, but again, it'll meet the provisions of the bylaw relative to signs.
Don't quote, I think it's what, Annie, I thought it was, don't quote me, it could be, could be fifty square feet, but I know that, I think the...
I think it might be forty.
So the pylon sign, you might be right, I believe it has to be, what's it, thirty feet backward yard, lot?
Yeah, we, we will look, we were trying to basically come up with a position that it stayed outside the utilities, but from what we could tell, we couldn't find a specific setback as, as a structure, so to speak, because the way we would position the sign, it would only be in the neighborhood of five and a half feet high by whatever that dimension, less than eight, seven and a half so feet wide. You know, more of a monument type of sign.
Is that gonna be lit?
Honestly, we haven't designed that, but of course, it would be in accordance with that. At the very least, I would assume we would put ground lighting to point up to the, you know, essentially that, you know, for that type of monument. Again, when I say monument sign, a ground position sign, rather than something up on a pedestal, you know, I think that'd be the most appropriate for this location.
And, oh, that was loud, sorry. Everyone, in the industrial district, on lots in permitted use in the industrial district, only one sign oriented to each street on which the premises has access, each sign is limited to twenty square feet in area. In mixed use or multi-tenant buildings, the falling, which would be this one, the following signs are permitted, one freestanding sign per lot, not to exceed twenty square feet in area, plus an additional four square feet for each tenant located therein, and not to exceed a total of forty square feet in area. One wall sign, awning or hanging sign or window sign per tenant, each sign shall not exceed twelve, twelve square feet in area. And I don't, I don't know if it has anything regarding setbacks of signs, I would have to dig a little more for that.
Yeah, we dug, and we didn't find anything, well, you know, the engineer, my, my project engineer was digging into it, I said, check this and recheck it, but of course, we'll make sure we meet the...
Thank you.
The only thing I see is that's where, that property next door, there's the gas station, I believe their sign, I don't know how close that sign is, because that's on the south side of the, of the property as well, so it's for blocking purposes or being too close as well, just to make sure.
I believe, and I think we're going for our sign, I believe my sign, I went through my sign guy, and I think he read in the bylaw, I don't know the bylaw, so I really shouldn't recite it, but I think he came up with thirty foot setback on the sign, Wally might know that better than anyone.
What, what district is that in, you know?
I'm in the industrial zone, so... You gotta keep it up, so it doesn't get wrecked when it's flowing, I mean...
Yeah, that makes sense, and as pointed out, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at the neighboring sign to make sure... Yeah, that makes sense. And as pointed out, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at the neighboring sign to make sure that it doesn't, obviously, impact the visuals of their sign.
TJ, he's only got one place. And the Groveland gas sign, that's up, that's more of a, you know, Han sign, as you would say. This is going to be a pedestal mount, so maybe on a couple feet of concrete, maybe.
Yeah, base.
Right, this will probably go over the ground.
But I just wanted to call it out, because I know that's the sign, the property that they're on, so.
But he has nowhere else to put it. No, but that's, Fides has got a temporary sign, I think.
Is there a temporary?
I don't know. Is that a temporary sign?
Where?
Groveland gas, I mean, it's a four-by-eight sheet of plywood that lettered.
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't taken a look at it.
It doesn't matter. You're going to follow, you're going to follow whatever bylaws, so it's fine.
Well, and, and, you know, as I mentioned, there's a, there's a couple, you know, we, we have some comments. You see that plan, it's labeled progress. But the intent is to provide a final set of plans that would be stamped and we'd make those fine adjustments, you know, as we. So. Yeah, so that was, that was actually brought up by TEC, I think, to make sure that sort of this project was symbiotic, if you will, of what was going on. Our engineer at the time did a sightline study and an understanding of that, and they looked at the, the impacts of the intersection. And it's further down that it won't impact sightlines. We, we also looked at volumes, traffic volumes, and, and they're rather minimal. One of the, you know, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but Ms. Schindler provided us with a draft potential conditions for, for site plan. And one of those was after 75% occupancy, to have a traffic engineer look at the counts. And there's been a little back and forth about that, but it seems like TEC's recommendation on that, which would slightly differ from the draft, would be to have, to have essentially an engineer go out and just do a field evaluation at the 75% level to make sure that the volumes coming out of the site aren't, you know, aren't impeding, if you will, the, the, the intersection. And again, you know, our engineer, when, when, when this was evaluated, you know, noted something, 42 peak trips, you know, peak hour trips. So they're rather minimal, in my opinion. And also, I think, and one of the, the thoughts I had about the overall condition is that, you know, we would assume, we haven't seen the traffic study for the, for the intersection, but typically, as is done, there's a growth curve built into that. You know, it's studied to say that in a five-year period, 10-year period, these are the anticipated volumes. So we would assume that that's been factored into that. However, you know, where the, where the condition's rather minimal, in my opinion, where we would just go out and evaluate and perhaps retime the signals if there's an issue. I think, you know, we're amenable to that. It doesn't seem very, very extreme, in my opinion.
So, let me, so what happens if at 75%, there's a heavy traffic use? Now there's a turnover of that building where there's a minimal traffic impact. They come to work, they stay there, and they leave at the afternoon.
Are you just timing them a lot? That's all, that's all they're recommending.
Turns over, you're going to have to.
No, I mean, I can't see.
You know what I mean?
Signal per second change is going to make that.
I don't think so either, so.
Yeah. I think the intent of this, I certainly, I certainly understand the intent of this to make sure that, you know, all of a sudden, we open for business and there's people coming out every three minutes, you know, that'd be an issue. But we don't anticipate that, you know, of course, given the tenants, we would assume would be there. But I understand the condition. So it, as was mentioned, to evaluate the signals, you know, take a day and evaluate what's going on for traffic. And if the signals, timing needs to be tweaked, then it needs to be tweaked, and it's a minor effort, in my opinion.
So the, now, have you done the traffic study yet?
There, yeah, there is a traffic study.
Let's see this one here. How many, what was the count?
The count, it was prepared by Vanessa.
First thing you gave us, Wally.
What's that?
That was one of the first things.
Yeah, yeah. Just interested to see what that, what that was.
So they, they anticipate for average weekday, 216 trips per day.
No, I see that.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. I'm talking about the traffic count on, between Salem Street.
Oh.
And coming down 97. What's that traffic count?
I, I haven't, we, we didn't evaluate the intersection, and I haven't seen the traffic report. I, I would assume one was done, but we haven't, we haven't had a chance, we haven't seen it to evaluate it. And that was the sort of the nature of my question earlier, that I would assume that whatever those volumes were studied, that those volumes would take into account the growth and, and things like that.
Is, is TEC with us?
No.
Tonight?
Uh, yeah.
Who is it?
Bill, TC's bottom left.
Oh.
Bill's over there, yeah.
Hey, Bill. What, do you have the traffic count from MPVC or?
We do have officials on our own that would likely have that count, because I know we were part of that study. But that is something that I'm personally not connected with, but I can have them get in touch with you if you guys are curious.
Yeah, I think they did as part of this application, but the town has done it for that intersection.
Okay, so part of this application would include that count on, on that road. Somebody's got the number, so you probably just get it.
The town would have the numbers while they put a traffic line in, right?
Right. So, so that, and it's substantial.
Well, and I think.
I mean, years ago, it was higher than you would think.
Yeah.
So two, two sixteen is.
Bill, I'm not looking at the traffic count. I understand the traffic study for you going in and out. Okay, I see that. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, how many cars a day are coming down 97? It's, I think, last time we heard of this, it was years ago. Between Salem Street and coming down was 15,000 cars a day. This is going to be a drop. The question is, is what you're turning into, and also because it's right up on the intersection and now with a set of lights. And there are times when the traffic is backed up a little bit there. I'm not sure of the reason why sometimes. But, but it is, between turning into the strip mall, making the left turn, and, you know, we've got a couple of businesses in the area, now you add yours. Is, is 200 cars a day going to make a difference? No. But the timing of that, what type of rigs are coming in and out, might. So that it's just a, that should have been included in the traffic study as to what the actual count is now. I see 200's not going to make a difference.
No, I think we did, we did have some dialogue on the time.
Yeah, just what is. Yeah, that's why, that's why it's important to have the.
We didn't need it in the traffic study. We had the dialogue.
Is it Vanassi? So Vanassi has a report here, the Salem Street at the Georgetown line. I know it's a little bit further up, but daily, 14, so basically 15,000 vehicles per day.
So I thought, yeah. And what about 97 and the split? Because it, I think, like Salem Street was like seven something years ago, and then combined it.
The Salem Street's more busier than.
Right, it's.
Salem Street at Project Site, that's.
It says the existing traffic on Salem Street is, is a 1.4% increase. So 216 is 1.4%.
No, 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 I'm not worried about the.
Which is the number you're throwing out there.
Turning in and out of here, is that going to make a dent in the traffic? No.
No.
No, no, no. But part of the traffic study to be included with this flow count is what he's reading right now. Okay, is that of 15,300 cars a day, 200's not going to make a big difference. However, the timing of that, because that should be broken down by hours, too, where the peak traffic is, and is that time with you guys on deliveries?
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what time that is.
I don't know if you were, you were here for that hour.
Yeah, so, so when Vanessa evaluated the, the, the work done by that, they did evaluate that. Now, obviously, the peaks may coincide, and I think I understood your point. You are essentially going to have a queuing stacking in front of our entry. And, and, you know, Vanessa determined ultimately that, that there's no, there's no anticipated issue with that. So, but I think, and getting back to the, to the.
But now we get lights.
Yeah.
And those are going to go active. Perfect. And those are going to go active. So now we're going to have a backup with the lighting of some, of some type, depending on what those, the timing is, because right now, they're just on flash mode.
Yes, and I, and, and my understanding is that Vanessa took into account the proposed work associated with that, with that intersection. So, you know, and they evaluated that. And I think the nature of the, of the.
Yeah, this is good.
Potential condition is to address just that. If we find that there's a lingering issue at, at, for instance, 75% occupancy, then perhaps the signals could be tweaked, the timing of the signals could be tweaked to accommodate. If we find there's a hangup, for instance, someone coming through the intersection, they're waiting to turn in, there's a queue, it's blocking things up, then we would, you know, have to retime the signals at 75%. But I think the intent of that, well, I'm sure the intent of that condition is for that very reason.
We also have a mess DOT, too. I mean, the peak time is seven to eight o'clock. And I would assume that's the morning, is 1,200 hour week now.
Yeah.
You know, from eight to nine, it drops down to 11, 67, nine to 10, 992.
Your peak is 1,700 to 1,800 hours at 380.
And these are peak times.
Yeah.
Addition.
So, yeah, you get a range that kicks off between like noon, really, 1,300 hours at one o'clock.
I, I think he satisfies it, Wally, to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, this, this is what I was looking for, the, exactly what this is, because that's not included in this.
No, that was a short response to the overall comment, you know.
So, no, the DOT, the DOT study is great, it's long, that's incorporated in, and then just your scheduling to avoid this timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at, yeah, on that. But for the folks of Groveland that don't know, that's a lot of traffic out there. It surprised me when those numbers first came in.
I sit in it every day, I know.
Ten, uh, ten years ago, when the first numbers came out, but 15, 3, just between that little intersection. And then if you come down here to 113, also 97, that, that number will raise a few eyebrows, too. We were totally surprised at the amount of traffic that comes through there. But like you said, if you're in it every day, maybe it's not such a surprise.
These numbers were also based on the original sized building, didn't they? See, somewhere it was reduced.
Yeah, the building size was reduced, great. This was based on a larger scope.
But I will say this, and I'm not obviously trying to blow up my spot, but the reduction of the building really didn't change the nature of the building so much. We lost a few feet per bay. So the intent is to still have the same number of bays tenants, for instance. It's just a reduction in square footage, which of course translates directly to rent.
And now you can turn around the back of it.
Yeah, that.
How you can pave the back and they can turn around and have the fire.
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't cover that. We did, so we did discuss that last time, and that was a major issue that we discussed, well, major. You know, we, we were able to shorten the building and add the, add a turnaround, or, you know, circulation around the building. And what we think that does is it also lends area to back up out of that final bay. And I think that was one of the first comments this board had, was, hey, if you're trying to back out that final bay, where do you go? And I think the addition of this pavement and back, we, we, we have turning templates that, that we looked at last, last hearing. We can certainly review them again, but that shows that maneuver working out of every bay, basically, and also facilitating movements around the building, so.
And get a rig and a ladder truck around the fire department.
Yeah, we, we use the largest, basically the largest fire truck we had in our arsenal, which, arsenal, which is the large ladder truck. We, you know, we have a multi-axle fire truck that we use, sort of a catch-all.
And the remaining land is just going to be as is, there's no future build now?
Yeah, no future building, nothing planned. I think hocketing back to when we first, you know, spoke with the town, which was sometime last year, we did have different concepts, could we do this, could we do that? And then we basically distilled it back to the project you see in front of you. And one of the main prohibitors of anything back there is we have a, a projected wetland crossing if we ever had to do something, because there's a wetland that traverses the site. So currently, this is the only plan. There's nothing else planned. There's no segmentation or anything alike.
Okay. And the structure staying or going the other, the wooden structure?
The existing structures are going to eventually go.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's say, just hypothetically.
Sure.
This building fills up like this, and there's a need for another one. Could he put another one back there with a wetland crossing?
Well. We'd have to, we'd have to make a compelling reason for a wetland crossing, which maybe we have, by the way, you know, in terms of only way to access that upland area. But there's other factors at play. One of the original discussions we had about that is how do you, what do you do for utilities? Because the groundwater is high in that lower area, so it's not, it's not so easy to, for instance, put a soil absorption system in there for sanitary. You know, so we have those factors limiting us, which was one of the issues we had, potentially looking at residential back there, you know, at our earlier concepts. So there's some prohibiting factors that, that would keep us from doing that, and, you know, I'm not saying it's impossible, but certainly there's no plans.
Especially if they ever brought in town sewage.
If they ever brought in town sewage, and to be quite frank, if there was some other access into the site, there isn't currently. There's no, we're, we're landlocked, if you will, behind there. There's no frontage of any sort, you know. We butt up against the railroad, there's residential properties, and, and then finally, the conservation land that's over to the south. So we don't have those opportunities.
Have you stenciled out a max build out?
He's not going to build out.
No, no, I, well, at the moment, but.
Oh, you mean in the lower area? In the area, the portion, no, we haven't. The other limiting factor, by the way, if this was, was brought up during conservation and some of the other conversations, is the turtle habitat area. So currently, we have an approval from the, from natural heritage, you know, regarding the, well, wildlife, regarding the Blandings turtle. And this program fits into their, you know, they, they've accepted this program, that's something that's not going to impact the turtle habitat area, so. Yeah, without a no take, right. So if they ever had to go, if they, we have a desire to do something down the road, it's going to come with a significant impact and loss of land through a taking.
Because he has 22 acres, that means he has, that puts him into a CMP, right? Conservation permit. And that means he loses at least a third. I think it's three to one. I, I don't, I went through it, so it was.
It varies. I, I, my understanding, I don't understand it totally, but.
I, I do kind of feel like you've lost sight of the ball here a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. So Wally, we definitely are like, let's.
Very good question.
Get the ball rolling.
Yeah, and then landscape around the building, anything?
He's extensive landscaping.
I'm looking at the tree scalloping, I was just saying that.
Yeah, so there's, so there's a number of things we're doing. In fact, I think.
Yeah, he doesn't have it. He, yeah, that's not the right one.
Yeah, we have, we have a landscape plan that's part of the original set, which we're going to modify. However, if I'm not mistaken, I think you had that very question, how much, how much in the way of trees are we impacting? And I had that, I had that spelled out here.
My favorite questions.
No, it's a very good question. Very good question. And I think we deter, oh, it's under an acre. It's essentially an acre of trees. Because don't forget, a certain portion of that area is already cleared as the residential building. So we're talking about an acre, and otherwise, all the trees beyond that level of impact, beyond the erosion control measures, are going to be intact, kept intact.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I don't. It might be in the last, from the last meeting.
No, that's all right.
I can pull it up if you can.
It is.
Yeah, I'll.
It's over. It's over the ask.
Yeah.
Keep talking. Don't say, don't say that.
What's the, what's the status of the application?
I'm sorry?
Status. TEC reviews have been done.
Oh, yeah.
The meeting's been done, yeah.
So relative to the, to the town approvals overall, we've had the benefit of our order of conditions has been, has been granted, and our special permit's been granted. And as mentioned earlier, we have the final comments, we believe that we responded to today for TEC. And, and also, Ms. Schindler has, has provided a draft of, of a potential approval with conditions. And we reviewed those conditions. And as I mentioned, the only one really that we were discussing was the one related to traffic. And it sounds like TEC has some thoughts that, some adjustment to the language, but still meets the nature of what they want to do.
Andy, we have a draft in here?
So I'm just asking you, is your number of pages you have?
I saw this storm, I saw this storm.
When was the draft decision, though?
Like the last week. I just put it together so the board, sorry. I put it together within the last two weeks and sent it out to the board with a meeting packet, just so that they had. I mean, it's a very, very rough draft with a lot of things missing, but I find it easier for, to look at something than to start from scratch in meetings. So definitely feel free to tear it up as much as you want.
So is the applicant just looking for a TA, tentative approval with permanent language and a decision? And final sign-off from TEC?
I think the applicant's looking for a special permit tonight.
So do you want to go through the findings of facts?
That's her need for the full.
Wally, this is the landscape plan. This might be an old one, so I know it's been updated a bit, but it was the quickest one I could find.
So the circular trees are the ones that you're planning in, or are those existing?
Yeah, so we're, because we're going to clear to install the subsurface stormwater systems, you know, we're going to plant trees along the perimeter as well as some shrubs and other things around the site, you know, some screening up in front, so.
Good, okay, that's.
Well, do you want to go through the findings of facts?
Yeah, I do, actually, if I can.
All right, can you give me one second so I can pull up the draft copy on my page?
Does everybody else have the draft copy in their hands?
It's a draft on it. I think I got it really flat on my fingertips.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
No speech, Jason, do you have it?
Ooh, RJC package. Oh, I got it. Thanks. The social economical, okay.
Capitany?
Yes, thank you.
Everybody have it?
Yeah.
So we'll go through it one by one if you want, the board based the following findings and conditions and decision. Which references the criteria of granting a special permit to the owner of the bylaw section fourteen point six A. Any social, economic, community needs which is served by the proposal.
I can see the certain economic benefits there.
I agree. Is there a community need? Yeah, I believe there's a community need. There's a storage, there's a contractor storage up the street, it's not as elaborate as this potentially will be, you know. Casm, yeah.
No, no, I think it's gonna matter.
Does everybody agree with that?
Findings one?
Yeah.
Findings one, yeah.
Agreed.
You have a full board, sir.
I agree on two.
I agree on two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, that's been addressed.
Yeah, we've been addressed that, no.
Adequately, uh, showed us on that.
Three's good.
Utilities and other per, uh, public services?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Board good with that?
Yeah.
Yep, three, yep.
As long as it's underground, yep, and, um-
Neighborhood character and social structures?
Sorry, Wally, what was the last one you said?
Dark sky, lighting?
Yeah, the lighting's been designed, uh, dark sky compliant with hoods and shields and-
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we have any spotted owls or anything to worry about either.
No, it just, um-
There's no residents, so there's no-
You, you can see, um, in, particularly when the clouds down low, um, you can actually see approaching, if it's not dark sky, I mean, it looks like a UFO landing site. And from being in orbit myself, when you, when you're looking down, you can really see the difference of the patterns between the dark sky, uh, particularly on buildings, malls, et cetera.
Would you like me to put a science high wall on mine?
No, it's like a searchlight, so, you know, uh, we don't need it as a turn as we're coming in, but, uh, you can really tell the difference. And then, when it's low to the ground, as you're driving, anyone that's driven around any kind of a large shopping complex in the fog, you'll see it, it just disperses the light everywhere in all directions.
Are those twenty footers?
Uh, yes, I believe they are. I think that was a question last time.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. We did do lighting.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, we discussed-
But I forgot whether there were twenty foot poles or-
Okay. That answers that one.
Neighborhood character, social structures?
Yeah, four.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you, everybody see the rendering when they first came in, the more buildings they were?
Okay.
Impact on natural environment, you address that?
We address that, yeah.
Potential fiscal impact, including impact of town services, tax base, and employment.
That's for the town manager's input, did we get anything?
I mean, I, I think the tax of the town services would be minimal.
Tax base.
Tax base, potentially go up, employment potentially go up.
Well, that's where the other input goes, when these plans go circular around all the boards, so we get the town manager that says about tax bases coming in, we got police saying there's no real big deal, just touring around the building and fire department as well, those are the only real, real services that are gonna affect you, it's not gonna affect the schools.
Fire department had a- Fire department comment on this?
Yep, they did when it was first issued, and you guys saw those comments.
So, as far as, um, as far as the number six, the fiscal impact has gotta come from the town management, so can, can we get something from them? Cause we wouldn't know that, we're not gonna know what the tax base is, we're not gonna know what's it cost to run a cruiser around, or a fire department call.
Well, I mean, I think there's definitely gonna be a, be a positive-
I don't think it's gonna cost anymore to run a cruiser.
At least, at least a little bit, because there's gonna be a building of a value there that's not-
Right, so, so I think from the town manager that says, we're gonna, we're gonna estimate, we're gonna use, we're gonna tax it this much, and potential town services are gonna be this much, and so therefore, but we can't answer that question unless someone's in the tax office over there, we're, I mean, I'm not, so.
I mean, I think, I think it's always-
Is that how that reads?
I think it's, I think it's a basis, me personally enough, that it'll be a positive impact-
Impact on town services, tax base, and employment.
Doesn't impact schools.
We can guess, but just get an answer from the town manager, I'm sure it's gonna be fine.
Well, it doesn't impact the school, but it-
No, 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 that's what I'm telling you, it does not impact the school.
Right.
But to answer this question, we need the town manager-
We know employment will go up.
Well, I think, well, again, I think, I think as far as-
Andy, you wanna- Can she come up with like, what do you think the tax base would be?
Town manager gonna copy this plan?
I'm gonna have to get the board of assessor involved, I'm going to have, or not the board of assessor, just the town assessor, I'll have to talk to the tax office. I'll have to talk to the fire chief and police chief.
But we can't answer-
There was no comment on it when I sent it around from anyone in those departments.
The town assessor won't have an assessment on this until it's fixed, right?
What they can, what they can get is the only thing that we're gonna see, cause you're gonna pay your own electric, electric bill, okay, and the sewer bill and the other stuff. They can call the police chief and say, if you had to run somebody around that building, does it exceed X amount a month, and guess, and that's it, same with the fire department, that's it.
Gas station's right next door.
Don't doubt it, okay, but, the board, I, I don't think, unless someone's on that committee and knows, we can't answer that, but they can, just send it over.
I don't think it's as easy as you say, I think there's a town assessor involved, she's gonna have to go, police state chief, she's gonna have to go, fire chief.
That was part of the plans that they got, and that's their responsibility to submit to the, to the board, within forty-five days of, of all those impacts, that's actually outlined, um, that they have to-
This isn't the time to be doing that, though, now.
No, but, um-
If you wanted it-
Qualify it, uh, well, it's okay by the board, but has to be a final approval by them over there, that's, uh, that's, cause we don't have the numbers, and we're not gonna-
We're gonna vote on it tonight.
Yeah, yeah, so, so let them come up with an answer on that.
I'm good with six and seven.
So, on seven, consistency with the town of Groveland Community Development Plan.
Yeah.
The town of Groveland Master Plan.
That's good.
So this is, I'm good with that. For reasons set forth, the board finds the project proposed in compliance with the town of Groveland bylaw and general bylaw.
Yeah.
Andy, were there any special conditions in here, not standard?
Um, yes, um, so, let me pull them up. Number three, any change or expansion in use or, and any additional tenants shall require the owners to present a proposal to determine if it, um, is a modification to the site plan. I guess that is pretty, you know, typical, whether, and whether or not it will need a parking reduction special permit. It has your prohibited items per aquifer protection overlay district spelt out. I, for site plan approvals, we've been requesting a bond in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. So just something, if the board has any thoughts or feelings on that, um-
What was that again?
That's number seven.
I think so far, I have it good. And, I think fifty grand is kinda low on that one, because of the impact to the wetlands, the adjacent wetlands. Do we, do we have any case that's not from that? No, I don't think we do, do we?
I, I, I think the, I mean, it's up to the board to make that final decision. If they were to have to do wetland remediation work-
It would be outside of the bond?
I would-
Conservation making?
It would be outside of the- It would, no, there isn't a bond with the conservation commission, but the way it would, the way it would work with conservation is if they were to impact the wetlands, the commission would issue an enforcement order against them, and that means they are mandated to perform that work.
So, regardless of the bond amount?
The mechanism for it would be a little different than a bond.
If, for instance, we had a blowout and erosion control measures or what have you, yeah.
Well, consider all the rain we've had, right?
Yeah, well, I, you know, part of this, part of this, which is, which is noted in the conditions of the, of the planning board, the draft conditions, as well as the conservation, is the, uh, the implementation of these erosion control measures, so, and we're gonna have-
I steal this from you?
You know, we're gonna have some ro- robust measures, given the grades and things that we're working with over there, so, which will all be established prior to construction, of course.
We, the surface infiltration basin two, and the disturbance that goes around that, I mean, that's-
Yeah.
As close as you wanna, you know, you could ever be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the toe of the slope of that, uh, is going to be all staked out and, uh, erosion control measures put in place, which include wattles and, uh, silt fence and the like. You know, which, you know, uh, the other, one of the other conditions that's noted in here, and I don't think we got to that yet, the construction conditions is, is, uh, construction monitoring, uh, by TEC, as the peer review on, yeah, weekly monitoring, which would include, uh, a, a review of the erosion control measures to ensure that nothing has been slipped and, you know, slipped and things like that, or-
They're gonna use a typical silt fence, or they're gonna use the, uh, you know, the metal fabric?
That's, that's a good question, I think we would use the, I think the standard silt fence would be in play for that, and-
Yeah, it was conditioned in the, um, order of conditions.
Is that a conservation, was that?
Correct, yeah, that was issue, it was, I, I had just wrote it, and I can't remember what it is anymore.
I just picked it up, it's in my briefcase, so.
Yeah.
They actually have that, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's got, it's like a wire mesh, really.
It's like a wire mesh.
More formidable, yeah.
And it's a draft, so.
Yeah. And, and, you know, as Ms. Schindler mentioned, it's in our interest to make sure that we don't have, you know-
Oh, yeah, you're not kidding.
Yeah, well, of course, and we, and I go through this on every site, you know, the, you know, we impress upon our clients or the construction team that, that's paramount, you know, erosion control conditions are paramount, especially in areas where we have wetlands, so, and we're going through this in all of our projects. I'm sorry?
And habitat.
Yes, of course, yeah, we have, we have a number of, you know, there's a number of things to, to keep straight, so, and the fact that you, uh, that, you know, as stipulated in the draft conditions, we would have an outside party reviewing those, obviously, uh, I'll put it this way, keeps the contractor honest, if you will, you know, but, um-
Who's gonna put the silt fence in, is it gonna be?
It'll be, it'll be the construction team, that'll be number one, you know, is, they'll, they'll have to stake that out and put it in, is, and if I'm not mistaken, I think a review of those can, well, we have, um, as stipulated in the draft conditions, is a pre-construction meeting as well.
Yeah.
Whether or not that happens on-site, I'm not sure, but, you know-
It's on-site, and it's with everyone, it'll double with your conservation one as well, of course.
We had, we used to use them on everywhere, we use them on the site, they were like farmers, they put, they make their own silt fence, they come with a ditch which they really bury that.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, you have to bury that in the, you know, in the, especially down slope, you wanna bury that, and actually, that's, those erosion control measures, the way, the way they're installed, or they're, are outlined in our plan set as well, we have a, a sheet of erosion control measures.
There's a detail, yeah.
Right.
Detail measures, it's, it's one of the most important issues we face on site, uh, site build.
Conservation took a look at it pretty closely, if I, I'm remembering, oh, April had done that, that's why.
Um, I have a question on the general conditions, number thirty-two, which is, there should be no vehicle storage, um, is that, nothing interior, just no exterior or interior?
So, that, I have made a note to myself at a prior hearing, that that is something that the board had brought up, and my memory recall isn't quite there, um, as to kinda why that was brought up. So, I, I had made a note, I'm not sure if it came through in the printout, just-
It, yeah, it has a little, little comment on it, okay.
Yeah, so I just, it needs to be, I think it needs to be elaborated, elaborated on more, but it, it had been a note, I, again, my memory recall was not, was not with me.
I think we wanna go outside vehicle storage.
I think they discussed it as not being a junkyard.
Right.
Right. That's as I understood, looking at my notes.
Okay.
It was really to prevent, to prevent that type of thing where you'd have just abandoned cars and the like, just sitting in the parking spaces, you know, uh, which would impact, obviously, a parking total, I think that was the nature of that.
Right, I can't see-
They'll definitely have construction vehicles there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, which is why I made that note, where I knew, I knew there was something I was missing, so would the board like, that condition to read something along the lines of, um-
No-
No vehicle storage of unregistered vehicles?
Or distressed vehicles?
That, that could take into account some of the people traveling, you know, but I like the unregistered thing, I think that, you know, that sort of points to an active vehicle versus a vehicle that's not, you know, that's just laying around.
Or, or no store, no store, no overnight storage of any vehicle not associated, not registered to, to one of the tenants?
Associated.
It functional, non, non-functional, right, you can't just store stuff, it's something that has to be-
Moving company moves in there and the guys are moving somebody across country.
Well, I would say that's associated with the business.
Yeah.
If they have a car on a trailer and they're gonna-
Right.
But the vehicle has to be able to be moved, has to work, has to be a working, registered working vehicle.
Has to be registered.
Registered, but work, you can register a car now.
I said, what did I say?
Has to be a working vehicle.
If, in a, in a situation of a move, the vehicle would, if, if it was unregistered, it'd be, it's sitting on the back of the trailer, which would be registered, so the trailer would-
We don't want vehicles sitting on registered trailers, just-
No, I'm thinking in the case of a moving company where they may-
Yeah, 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 yeah. But I'm saying that we don't want somebody, I, I think the intent of the board would be to have a distressed vehicle sitting on a trailer, just falling apart, you know?
Yeah.
In the back, and I would include that too, you know, just any vehicle.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think any vehicle is not registered to one of the businesses doing business on the premises. Would, would only be people that work there, and they're not gonna be there more than a day, business day anyways, cause they'll just be there till, they come back at the end of the day and then go home.
We have the same problem in Esquis, with that project, with the parked vehicles, and the ones that they use, I don't know what they were, party boats way back when, and they're removed eventually.
I think, some kind of work, like, yeah, I'll go back to, no longer than one business day for any vehicle operators to, a business.
So, we, we can-
That may be hard, because what if it's an auto, you know, you can't-
If it's a what?
It's gotta be there a week.
Put it inside the dome.
I, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate, but-
No, put it inside the dome.
I, I think the point is, we just don't wanna, we don't wanna broken down car, random storage of junkyard, that's all.
I don't know how you worded any, but we don't wanna junkyard.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll kinda try to piecemeal that all together and present a more, put to formal, uh, condition, once I can kinda figure out how to word that. But, yeah, I, I, I do understand what you're looking for, so I'll get that in a-
Interestingly enough, although certainly not this board, the ZBA had a condition, as part of our special condition, that any junk-related businesses had to be evaluated by the ZBA before we did that, so, again, not this board, understandably, but they did have a junk-related condition.
It's a good thing to know, and also part of the ZBA condition was that any, I can't recall, um, but it was surrounding, uh, new tenants having to perform a chapter fifty, or thirty-four, building evaluation with an architect with the building inspector, so that the building inspector, also the zoning enforcement officer, is aware of what uses are going into the building, prior to them going into the building.
So you wouldn't have a condition here where someone's sort of getting one past the goalie, so to speak?
Exactly.
Well, we have a table of uses and-
Yes.
Oh, yeah, exact, exactly, that's what, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
And you also have a note, a comment on thirty-three, which is the traffic study, the seventy-five percent occupancy? So that's, we're in agreement on that?
We're in agreement.
I need to, yeah, I need to update this one specifically, that's in front of you, with what TEC has kinda since, um, changed there, or, you know, instead of doing a full secondary traffic study at seventy-five percent, instead of having it written that way, the, um, having an engineer go out there one day and, and do traffic counts. So I just need to update that a little bit.
The applicant agrees with that, or, you're good, you're good with that?
Yeah, I, I, Ms. Schindler shared the language with me, and I, and I, we discussed a little bit earlier, you know, about really an evaluation, you know, essentially a day's worth of evaluation of the traffic pattern, how it operates, and, uh, it's pretty short order in terms of what we're looking at here.
Uh, Andy, on twenty-eight, you could probably add it there, but there was a separate menu item for the dark sky that we already talked about.
Sure.
You can include that under the utilities if you wish, or just find the other menu item for that. And then, just a, um, just a language change on, um, on, um, anywhere where you have, you have it in a couple of different places. The first one is, um, number one, the town planner shall enforce all conditions, it's the planning board shall enforce and/or authorize the town planner, chain of command. And then there's a couple of other semantic, small changes where it says planning department, we don't have a planning department, we have a planning board, just, you just wanna, it's probably, you know, menu items from somewhere, just correct that out. And the planning board is the, uh, is the authority.
We'll, we'll review the final draft, I mean, this is just a draft, so-
We'll, we'll review the final draft, I mean, this is just a draft, so, we'll see the final one then, but anyway, so, okay.
Yeah, before, that's why we're doing the changes.
I'm making notes directly on the document, so I can go through tomorrow and, and fix everything, so, I'm vigorously typing, that's why.
Full board tonight, do we want to, do we want to vote to approve what the comments made?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what we're doing. We had to go through all the, all the special conditions, and we had to go through each one.
Yep.
And then, yeah, put a motion out to approve, uh, the special permit.
So, Steve, is there anything that you want to add to this?
No, I think this covers, I, you know, I had the opportunity to review this over several days and, and, uh, you know, understand, you know, the, certainly the, the construction measures are, are standard, you know, make sure erosion control's in place. The pre-construction meetings, that's, that's all standard fare, in my opinion. Uh, the only one that we wanted to discuss, and we did, was the traffic, really, I thought that was one. Um, and I, you know, I know there was some discussion here about the, about the bond as well, and it, you know, uh, you know, to me, fifty thousand would suffice, but I, I think it would suffice for this type of project. Again, we are, in terms of the wetland impacts, and for instance, we're outside of the wetlands, we're in the buffer zone, so, and we're beyond the no disturb zone as well. So, uh, I think they're, uh, I think that's, that, that's fair and sufficient, I don't know-
Yeah, I, I agree, because if it was a wetland cross, then I think we'd be asking for like two fifty.
Yeah, we might have some significant dollar impact.
Has the bond amount been set?
Fifty. It says fifty. I think it's a hundred and fifty.
Who, who came up with that?
It's what we've used on the last couple of site plan approvals, so I just put it in here, because it's-
Did cash bond, or is it a tripart, or what is it?
We don't specify, we can, certainly.
We used to specify cash bond for very reason of something else that might pop up later. So, we did switch that all out, because we said the triparts, which you could never collect on, so we switched, that's why you had all those bank books, if you, uh, which probably drove somebody crazy that they were sitting over there, but they were in passbooks, because they were easier, the town planner could just, or a financier, uh, just signs it off, and then they go to the bank together, and then withdraw the funds right away, instead of the bond reduction, so, but, that is one of the options.
Letter of credit from the banquet, so that's some cash.
Yellow C was, um, we, we've been doing those, but particularly on subdivisions, we, we went to a, a cash passbook, because it turned out that the letter of credits were hard to cash in on. But that's been a policy for over twenty years, so, you guys pitch it, and, and-
I mean, it's, it's whatever you want, we have just said-
Over there, and finance approves it, and, because they're gonna be the ones doing something.
I mean, I don't care what's in the other, to be honest.
Either one, you know what, there's, there's cash, there's a letter of credit-
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And there's an insurance bond.
That's right. So, and we passed it over there to the other side, to see what they wanted to do with it, so. That's why we went to pass bank books for, uh, over the years.
So, what are, what was the final decision on that? What do we want for a bond?
Is, was fifty good? Do you guys, T E C came up with that?
Fifty grand in the same manner we've been doing it.
I, I think cash letter of credit.
That's an acceptable one, yeah. It's just that the, we kicked, we did passbooks for the other stuff, as it dwindled down and stuff, so, we'll talk about that later. It's been on the-
Well, I think we should, we, he should know about it now.
Yeah.
Was, was eight thirty-three's letter of credit?
Yeah, it's eight thirty-three, letter of credit or cash, or?
It was a letter of credit.
There's three options on the, uh-
Nelson Street was a, was an insurance.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. There's three, there's three, there's three options.
I think, I think applicant's option, applicant's option-
But you're gonna see a majority of them were cash passbook.
I agree.
Yeah, I think applicant's option, as long as it's acceptable to the town.
The, the board is the one who make, who accepts the bond when it's time to, so.
Yeah, I was just a little surprised that the number was set already, but.
Another condition that I just want the board to be aware of, that the chair had asked me to add, was condition thirteen regarding fire hydrants.
Oh, yeah.
All right, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah. Oh, that's good.
Yeah, what was?
What was the question on that?
Yeah, what was that? What was the question on that?
Just, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention, as it had been asked for, that's all. Just wanted them to know it was there.
No?
Yeah, I agree.
That sounds really good, yeah.
We agree on the, but what, what are we doing for the board?
Letter of credit.
If you got a letter of credit.
Chair and sort, crack cash, the three options.
We all agree on that? Will we take a vote on that one?
Yeah, one of the three.
One of the three options, yeah.
I mean, or you can just say when, or you want to go in as part of the condition.
Yeah, we'll, we'll accept the bond when they bring it in.
Okay.
Decide what you're gonna do.
Okay.
We have any, uh, comment from the public on this? Nobody here for the public, though?
Thank you.
We'll close-
I agree.
We'll close, uh, the public meeting.
So, motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll take a vote.
I will make a motion to approve the application for Nighthoff Sand Street, for, uh, special permit, according to Groveland zoning bylaw, and Groveland stormwater, and no disturbance by law.
So, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're gonna have to do this in two parts. I think what we'll do is take a vote on the special permit, right, Wollin, first?
Yep.
And, um, then we'll vote on the, the application and the rest of it.
Right. So, the-
So, do you wanna fly a motion for the special permit?
Yes, a motion to approve the special permit, as discussed, with the conditions and restrictions-
This is the approval, traffic approval.
-discussed this evening, along with the final engineering report and necessary corrections.
S set is the aquifer protection special permit.
Right.
Anybody else have anything to add to that?
And what that does is it covers everything for the catch-all, for the final report, and they get to work it out, and whatever the last one is, if there were some-
We have a second.
Took the motion, I'll second it.
Okay. We'll go one at a time, um, for the approval of the special permit, so.
Uh, well, so, it's been approved, yay.
Dennis McNulty, aye.
Chris Goodman, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
I'm gonna, alt, you got a full board, don't vote.
John's unable to vote, because he missed the two hearings, so he won't-
Jason Neves, aye.
Thank you.
So, the motion passes, special permit. Um, fly a second motion.
So, motioned.
As the decision.
As in, in the decision, with the corrections, modifications, as listed with the T E C and final engineering report, no discussions.
Site plan approval. Site plan approval, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, so, it's an aye.
Dennis McNulty, aye.
Chris Goodman, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Jason Neves, aye.
Okay, so, motion passes, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Sean, for the, for the help, and Ms. Schindler, of course, thank you very much for all the assistance.
Good work.
Thank you very much.
And next up, so we're gonna open up the, uh-
Oh, thank you.
Motion to open the, uh, she can back up for the-
Next one.
Yeah, what do we have to open, the motion to open?
Just close the public hearing, and then we'll just close the hearing, then they go to the next item.
Say what?
We just have to close the public hearing, which we did, and then we just go to the next item.
Yep.
Homestead.
Homestead, thirty-foot no-cut zone, issue along Cannon Hill Ave.
Okay, who's here from Homestead?
We're gonna open the public media, yeah.
We doing a public hearing?
This is not public.
No, it's not public. It's not a public hearing, this is-
Just a regular, general, just a general item.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Come on, Brad. So, of the, uh, thirty-five pages you have in your packet on this.
So, we saw it.
Sure. Um, does anybody need the history from, on the board, is that, how the subdivision came about, if we got that down?
Nope.
I, I mean, I, so I'd say, I think we covered it all. We, we went through a lot of the stuff, and the last update, we, we delayed, we didn't talk about it last meeting, because really, you had gone onsite to take a look.
Yeah, I did.
And we wanted to get what your, your take was.
Okay. I see photographs, where did these come from? Oh, these were yours, okay, that you said you had.
The residents added them.
Okay.
If you wanna see them in color, I can pull them up on the board.
And they're historic, they're historic. Some are current, and some are historic. Yeah, prior to, yeah.
Yeah. So, for the board's brief, um, I did meet with the residents, I'm gonna say for a good hour plus out there, right? Did survey it. Uh, this is the second, second time we've had to review this particular thing, but different owners. Um, few folks the same, but the other, apparently the house was sold from the first time we had to do this. And there was, um, evidence of the cutting, and now, they see the pictures, you can obviously see the cutting that was going on in there. I'm not sure why- Why that occurred? Uh, say again?
We've got all dead trees.
No, no, that was pretty obvious from the sidewalk, so, so we've got, we've got cutting in- Yeah, well, they can't do that. So, the, the way this was written, and the way that we wrote these for all the subdivisions, and this one in particular, too, because this, this one had a long history of curves, left and right. And this was, this would be the second enforcement action from the planning board, on this particular thirty-cut, um, thirty-foot no-cut zone, on the buffer zone in here. Um, and so, what was obvious to me, um, going out there was, and you can see it here in the photographs, is that, um, you know, there was cutting in there without planning board approval. There are some dead trees in there that do, uh, and may, uh, cause a problem. And what I, I met with the other, the other resident that was out there, which they were here, and they have, uh, an arborist jacor tree service, um, who I'm waiting for a call from, so I can get out there and actually find out what their plan is with this. Um, and from what I understood, that they are gonna be putting, trying to find some kind of species to get in there. But, uh, there was no doubt that this was, um, the buffer zone was violated, and not all of it from the current owner that was in there, but from the previous owner as well. That's just the second time, as I mentioned, they're coming up in here. Uh, you can see from the photographs, and also in inspection, almost like a trail that was gone through. The woods all piled up in there. Um, I, I think there's leaves from both sides being thrown over there, but that's okay, as, as far as, um, you know, it'll make room in there. Um, the problem is, is that with the trees down in this area, it defeats the purpose of the thirty-foot buffer zone. And if you look through the decision and the menu items that we even addressed tonight, um, that the board can go in there afterwards to tune this up, putting trees, and there's a history of that through the town, um, where we've actually had to go in and plant buffer trees in certain areas, because you can't really tell. But this was protected space from the beginning. And from the approval of the subdivision, to the recording of the plan, almost expired by one day, which is seven years from the time the approval is, before the plan was. And then, it was sold off to a developer who had never done a subdivision before, in the town of Groveland, and mostly ate in our lots. And initially, we had problems, um, with the developer, because they were not aware that they were responsible for everything, including the site clearance, the buffer zone, and even the road, the road construction itself, the fee, and the road, and a few other things that came about. So, I believe that this was encroached upon, uh, initially, uh, by the developer, not really courting it off. And then, on the first enforcement action, I actually strung this out, with the restricted area, with the homeowner who wanted to put this fence up that you're seeing in this photograph. Um, and we actually took a, a pink line, a string line, and actually measured it by the bounds, and put it, "No one shall pass in here with a chainsaw." Well, there are pieces of that string still there, it's just that it, it wore down. But no one paid attention to it, or these people in particular either didn't know about it, um, that were cutting the trees down in that area. So, what's gonna happen is, is, um, the trees have to go back in there, and the current owner was not objecting to that, they were just trying to figure out what species would go in there, so they don't die out. Because it is, it's gonna be something that doesn't require a whole lot of sunlight, because when the, when the foliage does come out, it kind of goes. But if you went in there right now, um, there's a significant difference between what was there before, and what the intent of the board was, why we put that in place.
So, then, if they're gonna plant trees, and they're gonna have an arborist in there, and they got an arborist-
Yeah, Jacor, he's a good guy, you know, Mark, I think is his name, um-
But we, I don't think it's a board that we can, I think this is, you know, from what I've read, and what I've looked at, and I think this is more a civil.
Well, well, no, not technically, because right now, there's a letter in front of us requesting to remove twelve dead trees.
Well, that, uh-
The first time he has admitted that he did it unknowingly, um, shouldn't have done it, but now, he's coming with the next set of twelve trees, asking for our approval.
That-
But we're now, but now, we also have to determine that thirty-foot buffer, whether we're gonna fill some of that gap. And I think the residents that are here, really the most important thing is, how do we alleviate the problem of this ever happening again?
To my mind, the, the owners on Homestead Lane were very well aware that was a no-cut zone, pointing to it as a word, because as soon as I saw them cutting up there, I walked right up, said, "Aye, this is a no-cut zone, not going to be cutting it."
That's right.
I'm sure after I walked away, they suggested what I could do myself, but, uh, and they kept going, and cutting, and cutting all the smallest saplings, underbrush, everything else. Uh, the first time they cut down a dozen trees, they were, already been told a while before it was a no-cut zone. We called the police, because we couldn't get a hold of anybody on any of the boards. They came down, they filed a report, they informed us, that it was a no-cut zone, and they still kept going.
I mean, it's obvious, it was cut, so.
And you yourself saw that some of those trees that are marked up there right now aren't dead trees.
No.
Something, and if they're gonna claim that a twelve-foot pine, a hundred feet away from the house, dangerous, and a home, I'm not buying it. The object is, they wanna clear that off.
So, so in the future, there's a couple of things that have to be done, and this is what I wanted to address with the board, okay? Um, we do have these, these no-cut zones, and you're gonna see them on, on, Stonebridge is another one. And one of the things that I wanna put into the subdivision control, the control of it, when we have these buffer zones, those granite bounds go in, with those plaques on it, that basically say, "No one shall pass with a chainsaw."
Did Homestead have that?
Homestead did not have that, because that was, that was, this subdivision was approved so long ago, but the buffer zone was intact. It's just the monuments didn't go.
No, I know, we have, we have a stone bridge.
Right, right, and that, that was one of the reasons, that, that those went up there.
But Homestead was done after.
Homestead was built after. Those approved, it was approved prior. So, now, in all of these areas where we have buffer zones, we have to put the bounds up, because what happens is, the homes change hands, people aren't here during approvals, or people just don't care. But if it's right in front of them-
And nobody's bringing their deeds.
Absolutely. Uh, so if it's right in front of them, that's gonna prevent it. So, So, that's a planning board thing for the future. So, anywhere where we have these buffer zones, those bounds are going in, in multiple areas, a couple per property and depending on the length of it, going through. So, that's prevention one. As far as this goes, they are willing to retreat this, as we can see from this. And yes, there is a request before the board to cut out the dead stuff. Okay? And I asked them to mark it, but I also wanted to meet with, I believe his name is Mark, from the tree service, the arborist. Uh, no, he was looking for a schedule, and he sent me an email recently, and it's, no.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's my concern looking at this, is this talks about the review and clearing out the dead ashes and the one, moving the cherry tree and the brush, but doesn't say anything about replanting any time.
Yeah, so that's why we're going to meet him on, and we did discuss the replanting, and we did discuss an erosion issue that's going on up there because-
There is generally just one of them.
It is, it is. It's on both sides too. It's coming down on the backside of their property as well, and we talked about it, you know, out behind your shed and where you can see it. And because the trees aren't there anymore, the erosion, I mean, it is very obvious. So, things have to be done on both sides. They have to do something on their side a little bit, and they have to do something to prevent it, plus they got to get these, the trees that they took down, put those back up. Now, that's why I wanted to talk to, I believe, again, I think his name is Mark.
So, what size trees?
Well, that's the question. What are they going to put in there? So, are they going to put in hamwads?
Trees underbrush, they don't grow.
Correct.
The canopies.
There's no underbrush left up there.
No, no, no. You put small trees under big trees. I'm not an arborist, but I've got a friend who's one. It won't grow.
My, my question is, what authority do we have to be able to-
We have a lot of authority on this.
-to enforce what needs to be done?
Well, because we put the buffer zone in effect, okay? And it is this board that puts it into every single subdivision in the menu items, okay, for buffer zones. When we put it up, okay, and things are going to change hands, and that's why it's a requirement now on new subdivisions, when people sell the houses, okay? In the mortgage closing paperwork, goes the men, goes the memorandum of decision on every single one because of Stonebridge.
Was there a memorandum of decision in Homestead?
I believe that it was.
I think there was.
Because they, they referenced it later.
They talked about it after, yeah.
However-
The, the homeowners, when they first came-
The buffer zone is in the memorandum. And, and let's say you stumble across it, like, let's give them the benefit of the doubt, okay? Okay, we came across it. Okay, we do monitor that, and we are in charge of that. Okay? Now, the residents are willing to do something in there. The question is, I want to know what they're going to be cutting out. I mean, it's obvious the dead stuff's got to go. I mean, some's pretty tall, and it's, it's got to go. But the question is, that they want to replant, they're trying to find a, a species that's going to grow, that was part of the discussion, and where? And how many? So, I can't tell from this that's submitted. And I didn't get any blowback on any of this. This was all-
Yeah, they've been, yeah, they've been-
Been very nice. Everybody's been nice that, we went out there, you know, at point zero there, walking through it all. But it's got to be replaced, and it's, it's got to go in. Now, in the future-
And they're not here to discuss that.
No, no. But, I don't think we should make a decision tonight. I think what we're going to do is, is other than to meet with the arborist on site again, give him my schedule, and meet him out there, and then have him detail this and have them submit that to the board, for the board to vote on. But for future-
I think you guys, I think the board has to be careful. It's a slippery slope.
I, I agree too.
You know, just because, you can look at them both ways. It is enforcement, and it's also a civil matter. I mean, we do not want to take up, as a board, we do not want to set precedents.
Well, Stonebridge already set the precedents, because that was right under our authority, and this is right back where it is. However, we can fix that in the future by adding these bounds.
Okay, so, in Stonebridge, no pool has been removed after they put them in where the no-cut zone is?
Right, they had to go back and retreat, yeah.
So, they did not retreat? So, I, I still want to, I still caution the board?
Which we can address in, in the subdivision control lot to tighten that up, but the bounds do have to go in as a warning shot, because they're not in.
But you can't, you said it.
Future stuff made by looking at-
Well, that's what I said.
Looking at Homestead, I don't think you can make them-
But Homestead, from the beginning, all the way back, had this 30-foot buffer zone from minute one. And if you violate it as a, as a homeowner, whether you didn't know it or not, you got to put it back.
Right, I think the question is, at this point-
Yeah.
I think the question at this point is, what ability do we have to make any kind of enforcement actions against it at this point?
Jason wanted to speak.
The other thing is, is a lot of those trees are ash trees, and the bore beetles just devastated those. And that's, that's, I mean, you can walk down to the river here, and it's not nearly packed as it was in the 2000s when this was first built. So, and this, and what he lists here in his report is 20 ash trees that needed to be cut down. So, that's a, that's a substantial amount of ash trees that are leaving that area. So, what makes-
Now, there's, there's more than ash in there.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure there's more than ash, because that's, that's, that's a lot that's still there.
There's, there's other species. But what I do agree with, that he's got to find a species that's going to grow in there so that doesn't have a, a disease with it, and it will grow. And I don't know if that's something like an herbivites. I don't know if that's a, a white pine. I have no idea what's in there outside my building.
That may, that may implement taking down more trees to implement.
No, no, there is a whole swath that goes through there, and parts of it are 10 feet wide that they could easily-
Okay.
-plant along the way. As a matter of fact, it's like a trail path that goes through. I don't know how that happened in there, but it wasn't there before. But, but there's plenty of area to where they can put this. And of course, over there, they could plant some stuff on, on their side too. But the zone itself that was supposed to be protected has been violated now twice.
But again, I, I mean, my worry is, how are we going to set precedents? If they voluntarily stated that they want-
Well, I think that's what they're doing. They're volunteering to do this, because it's not that much.
Right, and that would be okay, but we, as a board, shouldn't, you know, take a, take a civil stance.
Well, we're not taking a civil stance. We're taking an enforcement stance, and you know what? We can do. We can go right back to the developer, right back to the developer on this and pull an 81W and force them in there. But that's not really the, the right approach for this. We, we have consensus on both sides to do something. Let's just see what that is, and let's approve it. Those dead trees do have to come out of there. I saw them. Okay, some of the ones were tagged. I had question marks on, because they, they didn't appear to be dead, but some were pretty obviously dead. I mean, they do have to come out of there. So, that's the next step that I'm going to present to the board, is to meet, meet with the, the arborist, discuss their plan, have them try to tune it, submit it to the board, okay? And then, the board votes on it, and I think that'll pretty much end it. For the future subdivisions where we have, and if you haven't read the menu item, fellow board members, some of you that might be new, you need to take a look at it, because we have full authority to go in and put in buffer zones and enforce those. But what we-
Are new subdivisions not on pre-existing?
Correct, correct. Well, this one had it, so it, so as it's built, we have enforcement action to go back in. However, this one was prior to us putting all the plaques up. And Conservation, I give them credit for this, because they're the ones that first came out with those years ago, decades ago, actually. And they put them in on Stonebridge, and that was one of the smartest things to do, to put this out there, because as the homes change hands and move over and time goes on, people forget. And you're going to give them, you know, the benefit of the doubt. This one just happened to be violated twice, and these folks are still there. Weaver's still there, so they noticed it. But I think the board can do a better job at getting its intent out there. And we're going to give everybody the benefit of the doubt on that, but let's do our end and just put up the plaques that says, you know, "You can't pass without, with a chainsaw." And, and I think that'll pause. And because the plaque, I believe, has language on it that you have to contact, is that right, Annie? Conservation says you got to contact the Conservation Commission?
On the, uh, the Conservation plaque?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can't remember what-
It's specific language. And then, on ours, we could just put, you know, "Contact," if it's Conservation too, "Contact the Groveland Planning Board," or, you know, before any, anything is done in this area.
I thought we were doing that.
I mean, you can walk in, you can, I mean, they're throwing leaves in there, which just adds to soil, but both parties are doing that. I didn't see an issue with that. No one seemed to complain about it.
All right, so this matter, what are we going to do with this? We're going to wait until Secoria tree?
Yeah, meet some meeting with, with Chocora, and then I'll have him present something to the board.
I just, I'd, I'd like to be reminded, what was the, what was the goal that you guys are looking for out of this? I know that obviously you wanted to-
...down these storms and what the erosion presented.
Yeah, and in the tree, the trees in there, the erosion is coming down that left side of the house property that you saw where the fence is, is hooking around.
Yeah, that's-
And then, it goes through, and then it carries over and comes down. And then, we talked about some hay bales. That's where I want to get, if, if it is Mark that's out there, the arborist, to suggest preventive measures, because that water is coming right down, and it's going, exiting on the-
I don't think we have to suggest it. I think we just, you know, we want so-fence and hay bales.
I, I believe that's the, the solution, just to divert it.
Standard protocol if you're going to have erosion problem.
And I think we talked about a, a French drain in that one area for you to help you with.
I'm a real engineer, so I don't want to go that far.
No, 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 I'm just talking the, uh, just a rip.
So, something that the board can handle.
I, I just, I wanted to know what your goal was, and then, based on our bylaws, what we can do to help that goal be achieved.
I don't want the erosion to stop, obviously.
Right, absolutely, as does everybody.
Going out, they all mine my house. The roots on some of the trees are sticking this far out.
No, he's right.
Yeah.
He's right. It's, it's very apparent. You're going to lose that tree in that one area.
Okay.
That's not taken care of. But he's right. The, the hay bales would definitely do a big, big plus in there. Also, new, new trees in there will absorb it.
That's, I mean, as, as far as I'm concerned, that's, you, you, we do whatever we can to help the abutters work through what they want, under our, under our rule. That's all we can really do.
For, this was a concern that was brought to the board in 2014.
Yeah, this is the second enforcement action on this one. You're right. You're absolutely right. And it's good that the- I want to know who put, who authorized the retaining wall on the house next door to that. That, that one, one of these days, we got to look into just to find out who approved that. I mean, it's like 14 feet tall.
So, Wally, we're not going to vote on this tonight, right?
No, no, this was just a board update until we get the final recommendation. Obviously, they're not going to do much in the snow now. I mean, probably three inches up there.
My concern with the wall is, we know how structurally sound that thing is.
Yeah, you know, that's, that one's out of the board's hands as far as the construction goes. I don't know how that occurred, but I would like an answer. Annie, have you ever talked to?
I know it was permit, uh, there was a Conservation, one second. I know when I was, someone did a big records request on this project, and I, when I was putting it together, I did see that there was a correspondence from Conservation with, I think, a determination of applicability allowing for it to go through. I would have to look into it more. This was just as I was scanning things into the computer.
Just to get a board answer on that there, side note.
I think we're in the step in the right direction, because the Pelkey family, the Six Homestead Lane, they've got an arborist. They have a quote here, "You're going to follow up with them to see about plantings and trying to restore." One of the main goals, right, is to restore and see where that. Jamison has, he's said that he's willing to put more trees in there or whatever, deciding what kind of is. So, we're in a step in the right direction there.
I don't think the board should call it enforcement.
I, I think, I, not at this-
Not if they're, not if they're going to-
Well, he's offering. There's no need to force. He's, he's offering right now. So, there's no need to, there's not even need to talk about that.
I, I think it need, it should be titled up as an explanation of the buffer zone and what its intent was, and where we do have willing parties to get this resolved. I think it should end at that.
I think it should be the board's decision to guide the willing party on-
I think that's exactly what we've been doing.
I wouldn't call it enforcement, because I think it's going to come down by us someday.
I've never used that word, but I mean, he's gone, right now, he has a letter into us about removing the trees, and we're doing our due diligence of saying, "Okay, before you do these 12 trees, you need to have an arborist come out and look, and you need to replace any trees that need to be repla-"
And that's the proper, that's the proper-
Our own, I guarantee. She'll have 30 letters of them begging for enforcement, on stuff that we have no, no authority on.
I'm not enforcing any of that.
No, I know, so I think we should be careful.
It's just the bylaw.
No, I disagree with that. But, but anyway, as, as far as the explanation goes of what this was for, and they are absolutely right. Okay, what this looked like before and what happened in there. Weaver's been on top of that, and they've been living there. How many years have you been there?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, so they've seen the-
You also got to say, Wally, you know, since June, we've had, what do we have? Four 75-year storms?
There are-
No, this is, this goes completely on that.
These are-
This has been going on a while.
Yeah, Wally's right. The storms we've been having, though, are more like 1,000-year storms.
I mean, we've had-
Because a 500-year storm is seven inches over 24 hours, and we've gotten like four inches in two hours.
Yeah, this is, yeah, it's prior to. The erosion that I saw, it had nothing to do with, with the last year's weather.
Right. So, 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 so as a board, will, will we just get the updated estimate from Chocora? I'm sorry, I'm not saying that right. That includes the planting plan?
The planting plan.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we'll have it, you know, approved to cut the dead stuff. That's our really work, and let's see what I got.
We got one of the-
An erosion plan. I think it's amenable to that, to the board. I think if, if they're, you know, if the snow's gone before the next snowstorm, I think they should self-put some hay bales as soon as possible.
Yeah, that one's easy. Yeah. Okay.
A question for Wally. Wally, you made reference of both parties putting leaves in the, in the buffer zone area?
In what?
In the buffer zone area?
Put what?
No-cut area leaves?
Yeah, leaves being dumped on, um-
Which, which parties?
Into that area, you know, they're just breaking up your leaves, and they go in there.
Which parties?
Both.
Both, up and down the hill?
Yeah.
Because ultimately, who owns that property?
That's a good question.
That's Six Homestead, yeah. Okay.
I believe the original party. But when I had both parties out there, no one, there was no objection to that. It's going to turn into soil anyway, so.
It's going to compost out the soil.
Yeah, no one was complaining at all. I just mentioned what was in there.
I, yeah, I understand where the home, both sides, the homeowners are coming from, and you're concerned about the property.
No, actually, they were quite amenable.
No, they, when they came in together before, it was, we talked, and you just want to make sure some things taken, taken care of.
Yeah, there were, there was no-
I don't want, I don't want them to watch me watch. I don't want my property destroyed. That's all I want.
Yeah.
I don't want my basement flooded anymore. I don't want my yard washed out. I don't-
You had a privacy barrier, barrier that's disappearing?
Yeah, I think, I think both parties want the privacy barrier. That's what they mentioned, so.
Right.
So, that's all, all in good spirits there. Okay, that's it.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I want to know when you hear back from Chocora.
Yeah, I will. They're looking for my schedule, so I, I will get on it. Now that I have something in writing for them, I can call them myself.
And thanks for reminding when they will.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for hanging around.
So, next up would be, Annie, figuring out some dates for our next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that is perfect.
This is all for you right here. Which part?
The-
Picking dates for meetings for next two months? I don't have my schedule?
We, like I mentioned, we're probably going to be seeing an application for One Elm Park for site plan review, as well as a parking special permit. And then, with these zoning bylaw updates that I had talked about before, we're going to need to obviously schedule a public hearing for that. So, I just wanted to get a couple of dates secured on the calendar so I can, you know, get those notifications in the newspaper and strike the applicant that they can put that date in the newspaper and just, you know, plan.
When are you 23rd?
We are not, we cannot do a meeting on the 23rd. There, that's the woodier election, and we're not allowed to have-
We don't have anything after the-
We're not allowed to have-
Have meetings on election days. Yes.
Wait a second.
One second. Let me just pull up the calendar for this meeting.
That'll be February.
So-
Our typical calendar is what, the first and third?
First and third. So, we could do, so, and also thinking, because, because I'll have to post-
So, the first Tuesday is the sixth?
Yes, and that would, sorry, I just want to make, see if I can post in the newspaper in time for, um, so many moving parts.
You should, that should be Monday time.
The sixth, yeah, it, it is. So, yes, the sixth works.
February 6th.
Okay, is everyone good with that date? I know, Wally, your schedule's, you, no?
I don't have anything for February yet.
Oh, okay, great. And then, just-
You're locking off.
Sorry?
I'll tell them I won't.
Okay. No, John.
But I think John has something to say anyways.
From the, well, not for zoning changes, for One Elm Park, he would.
One Elm Park, yeah.
I'd have to stay with that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
February 6th is the zoning change, hopefully. I need to make sure I, I can obviously get the newspaper and everything in time for that. And then, could, just in case One Elm Park isn't able to get an application in by February 6th, could we also mark February 20th down as well? That's the third Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay. So, and then, okay. Because that gives me two dates, and they're also-
February 7th, March.
No. What? Do, oh, we can do, I mean, I'm happy to keep-
You said a couple of months, right?
Yeah.
March, first Tuesday, be fifth.
Oh, wait, hold on. Then we get into elections. One second.
Oh, we can't have anything.
Early elections.
I know.
Um, but I'm, so, um. Okay, so that's February. So, for March, we wouldn't be able to do the 5th, because that is presidential primary voting, which is so crazy that that is so soon. We could do the 12th instead, which would be the second Tuesday of the month? Or we could just go to the 19th, which would be, again, the third of March?
Well, the 19th.
Okay.
That's if there's anything.
Agreed, yeah. It would only be if there's March 19th. Okay. Yeah, I think that'll be, that'll be good. That will, that'll get me what I need for zoning, and then for that potential applicant. And then, actually, we might also be receiving, hopefully, an application for Eight Elm Park, that Mexican restaurant that you've been seeing the signs up for.
What, what are the 14 of those?
Apparently, he owns one in Chicago.
Well, you're in the 14 permitting, yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, he needs a lot of permits. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was quick. All right. Hey.
Who seconded that? I'm sorry.